Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Public Hearing on Tuesday, August 26, 2025, Residency Bill 2024-1214. Would the Clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 1214, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title IX, Zoning Code Article V Use Regulations, Chapter 911 Primary Uses, Section 91102 Use Table, by adding a new use interim housing and supplementing Section 91104 Use Standards by adding standards for the same.
Thank you. For the record, we are currently joined by Councilwoman Gross, and we will begin with a presentation from our Planning Department.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, Councilwoman. My name is Corey Lehman. I'm the city's zoning administrator and chief zoning officer, joined by my colleagues Kate Rakus and Paul Cancilla. This legislation has a little bit of a storied past. The principle of it originated as a bill that was referred to Planning Commission, I believe, in 2024, earlier in 2024. It might have been 2023. Okay. For temporary managed communities. And this, to make a long story short, had some alignment with, good afternoon, Councilman, had some alignment with a package of amendments that the city planning staff had been working on around fair housing. And we worked collaboratively with the council offices to try to take the spirit and intent of the temporary managed communities legislation and create a new zoning use category called interim housing that would, that would address that and accommodate that and allow flexibility for various typologies for that kind of interim housing need. This, subsequently, the city planning department recommended that legislation to city council, and that's been on a hold. But subsequently, in November of '24, council members Coghill and Gross recommended or referred to the Planning Commission this interim housing package, which is the bill that's before us today. And the Planning Commission reviewed it on January 14 of this year and made an affirmative recommendation to city council with two conditions. Those conditions are that council should remove the language regarding a four-year sunset for interim housing uses and should add wraparound services as a program to report on in the operations and management plan. This bill was held at city council and is before us today. I can note, too, that it had a very helpful conversation with staff of your office, Councilman Coghill, regarding an approach to the intent of the four-year and an approach to that that I think we're in agreement is a really positive strategy that avoids some of the concerns that city planning commission had. So with that, without going too deep into the substance of this, but it is to say, this allows in certain districts, primarily in our mixed-use commercial districts, the ability for this interim housing use to be located and some standards that come along with that, that have to do with adopting a management plan, operations plan. Okay. And I think I will conclude there. It has been recommended to city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to those who have registered to provide testimony today at this public hearing. And we will begin with our first registered speaker, which is Mary Ann Daughery. Okay. Our next speaker, well, let's see. Nope. Our next speaker would then be Ralph Williams, who I do not see here, is not online. Our next speaker is Amy Zeiss. Our next speaker is Sierra Van Cheek. Van Dyke, I apologize.
Is this all right?
Yes. Just give us your name, neighborhood for the record, and then your time will begin.
Yeah, awesome. So my name is Sierra Van Dyke, and I am in District One. I'm also the head of an engineering startup in Lawrenceville. I'm here today with comments regarding the interim housing ordinance amendment. While this amendment allows for zoning requirements to be waived, it will do nothing to address the root causes of homelessness in Pittsburgh without a dedicated plan in place on how to utilize it. According to this amendment, the applicant must meet one or more of the criteria of Section 178E.08, which states that the use of this amendment must come from a registered community organization. This does limit the number of groups that can provide housing through this amendment, as many organizations and collectives that serve our homeless neighbors, such as Our Streets Collective, Scorch, Food Not Bombs, and the National Union of Homelessness, would not be qualified and may have no desire to. I urge the council to consider expanding who can use this ordinance in order to provide housing. Furthermore, this council should consider why this amendment was pursued in the first place. Providing stable housing with elective support services is key to solving homelessness. This model is known as Housing First and has proven 88% effective in 26 independent studies, saving on average $1.44 for every dollar invested. This model has been presented to this council by dedicated organizations, including the Tiny House Project, which provides cost-effective, single-residence occupancy units utilizing the city's empty lots, of which there are an estimated 16,000 as of 2017. This is one way we can use this amendment for good. Housing First can also be achieved utilizing the estimated 5,000 empty residential properties in city possession. Both of these methods will save the city money by addressing the blight of empty properties estimating to cost the city around $9 million every year and by dedicating resources to getting our neighbors off the streets and into stable housing. Housing First is proven to work, it is fiscally responsible, and it gets to the root of this issue. This amendment will be effective if there is a robust plan on how to provide stable housing. If this is the first step in committing this city to a robust Housing First model, then I support it. This proposal detailing how effective this would be can be sent to each of your offices this week, and also it will list how much money this could save in the long run. We need to stop wasting our time and money by shuffling our unhoused neighbors around and by pursuing effective solutions instead. Additionally, I hope this information will be passed on to the rest of the council members that are not here, and I think the four-year should be a minimum of how long the housing should stay. I do not think it should be sunset after four years. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want, you can submit your comments to the Clerk, and then we can share them with all council members. Our next speaker is Gina Pulis.
Hello. My name is Gina Pulis. I'm a resident of Bangsville. You know, this bill, as it's currently written, does not incorporate any of the Planning Commission's recommendations requiring mental health treatments, addiction services, or even educational support. You know, what insurances do we have that these critical amendments will in fact be included? And if they are, who will ultimately be responsible for overseeing these facilities? And which organizations will be held accountable for their management? Housing alone does not resolve co-occurring disorders that often accompany homelessness. It requires treatment. The low barrier or Housing First models, when coupled with harm reduction approaches, especially without mandatory treatment, have repeatedly led to a devastating path of human carnage across this country. Recent data underscores these failures. Examples: Washington State, homelessness has surged by over 25% since 2022. That is despite spending $5.8 billion since 2013. San Francisco, Episcopal Community Services, which is one of the largest Housing First providers in San Francisco, recently reported more than 100 overdose deaths and thousands of 911 calls within their supportive housing projects. The conditions inside one of their flagship affordable housing sites, 833 Bryant, are especially alarming. Residents face filth, cockroaches, violence, there was just a recent shooting. In the two years since opening, this single facility has already seen nearly a dozen overdose Housing alone does not solve the homelessness crisis, especially when it fails to address addiction and drug-induced mental health issues that drive many of these cases. San Francisco has become the poster child for failed taxpayer-funded supportive housing. Programs that are haphazardly run are dangerously ineffective. Pittsburgh must not repeat the same path of destruction. You can see for yourself in the recent article, "Housing First, Morgue Second," by Susan Dyer Reynolds. It lays out critical facts, data, and statistics, exposing how San Francisco's approach has done little to solve the homelessness crisis. Instead, it has enriched the profiting from these homeless industrial complexes while leaving the very people it claims to help trapped in crisis, or worse, in a coffin. Real and serious solutions demand onsite treatment with professional addiction service providers, and most importantly, strict accountability. Without that, everything else is nothing more than virtue signaling.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is David Gearing. Then our next speaker is Terry Hennis. Not. Our next speaker is Kent Bay. We saw you come off of mute, Mr. Bay, but if you're speaking, we cannot hear you.
Okay. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Kent Bay, veteran, Hill District resident, lifelong native of the city of Pittsburgh, three generations here. I'm a military veteran, and I'm speaking on behalf of marginalized veterans as well as marginalized groups in relation to this legislation. I don't see anything in this legislation that provides oversight of how this legislation is going to be implemented and what countermeasures are in place to ensure that this legislation is carried out in the best interest of the citizens in the city of Pittsburgh. I don't know where this legislation was or where this concern was at the time of Mr. William Hardison's death. We are at the two-year mark of his murder by over 70 law enforcement officials here in the city of Pittsburgh, and all he needed was housing. But his house, his family home, was sold by Sharecell, a governmental entity, to a pop-up corporation that was clearly involved with gentrification efforts in one of Pittsburgh's neighborhoods. We also have a lot of that going on in the Hill District. I have not been able to purchase property from the city of Pittsburgh or launch a successful affordable housing program to those people that need affordable housing. We've been deliberately denied, and when I say "we," I'm talking about my organization, Project Love Coalition, has deliberately been stonewalled from participating in affordable housing efforts in the region. I'd like to know how this legislation is going to benefit developers such as Project Love Coalition and provide oversight to ensure that affordable housing is available to those that are in need so that unnecessary deaths don't have to occur. And there still has not been any input as to investigation in regards to Mr. William Hardison's death. He was also a military veteran and a longtime member of the Pittsburgh community.
Thank you, Mr. Bay. Let the record reflect, we've also been joined by Councilmen Coghill, Mosley, and Councilman Charlin. I believe we've exhausted our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone else in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, if there's any comment from members, Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First and foremost, hey, Blake, I'd like to call Blake to the table in case, you know, he and Corey have been working closely. Just to be here, Blake, I don't have anything specific for you, but come on up to the table. So, anyway, I just want to start with thanking Councilwoman Gross. You know, we set out years ago, and I'm not going to give you the whole story through the pandemic and as to why we developed a committee from, you know, then Council President Teresa Kiel Smith. But we had continued to work on this throughout the years, and we've researched many other cities, many other, you know, places in the world who were addressing this problem. Nobody could have foreseen the pandemic. And the spike in the homelessness really came from the pandemic, I felt, you know, as far as the Pittsburgh area goes. So, you know, we came up with three or four different concepts out of a committee formed of four council members. The Councilwoman Gross and I went on to, you know, develop a way whereas we had something to move on in case we weren't able to resolve this problem. I think we've seen over the past year that the county has done a really good job. I credit Aaron Dalton and County Executive Sarah Inmarato. I feel like their 500 houses and 500-day plan has been fruitful so far. I don't see as many people out on the street. I feel like it's improved. So, our hope was always, Councilwoman Gross and I, was that we would never have to build tiny villages or tiny home communities, interim communities like this. We never wanted there to be the need, but we wanted to be prepared. So, we put an extensive amount of work into this over the past few years, and that's why I hope that this council passes this in the upcoming months. I want to thank you, Director Lehman, for your work and working with Blake in this and as to the four-year interim and, you know, other ways that we could, you know, pass this without any real complications. So, bottom line is this, you know, we came up with this out of the goodness of our hearts trying to solve an issue that was, a serious issue, is homelessness in the city of Pittsburgh. We don't want people living on the streets. As it sits today, we are not planning a tiny community. We are not planning to build on any certain location. I want the public to know that. But we want the tools in place, whereas if, we can't predict the future, none of us could have predicted COVID and what happened there. And no matter what the future brings, we want, because we've seen and we've studied this extensively, we know it works in many other cities. But we want the ability to do it, and we don't want to have to start from scratch as we did. It's been three years now, I think, we've been working on this. So, you know, to start from scratch in case we ever need it is, you know, that doesn't make sense. I think it's well thought out. I think, you know, very little opposition to it, I will say, and I hope that this council passes it. I hope to answer any questions and concerns that any of the public might have at this point. But I think to pass this is a security measure for the future, if anything else. And again, I want to stress to the public, there is no plans, we are not seeking property and going to erect, you know, a tiny managed community. I did want to say, in response to some of the comments that I've heard, that never have Councilwoman Gross and I have thought about, you know, introducing such a thing without wraparound services that are needed in such, you know, facilities. And that, you know, goes without saying. It might not be in this legislation, it might not be clear in black and white here, but certainly, you know, one does not go with the other as far as we're concerned, you know, moving forward. So, with that, Mr. Lehman, if you want to make any comments as to, you know, my comments or Councilwoman Gross's when she speaks, and great, so you can start with me, I guess. Or you want to go first?
Did you ask a question?
I don't know.
Okay, I'll go next then.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, our guests are here to answer questions, which we appreciate you being here. So, I just want to concur and say that we really did, you can go back to so many of the council sessions and hearings that we had, starting in 2020, when we really started to see more people on the street. And so many of us on council were saying, we need more transitional housing, right? Up until that point, we probably should have done better even before 2020, but we had really only been providing funding for those overnight shelters, where many of them, many of them, you had to leave in the morning, right? And you had to line up to get back in at 3:00 in the afternoon, no matter the weather, no matter what time of year. And that is not housing. So, just temporary, especially just overnight shelter. I remember saying, very keenly, remember saying, you know, what would I do? At the time, I wasn't 59, I mean, this is five years ago now, I was, you know, 54, and saying like, I wouldn't be able to take all of my worldly possessions and leave in the morning and fend for myself outdoors and then get all my worldly possessions back into a shelter where, A, I might not be safe overnight, I may not wake up with all of my possessions in the morning. So, we had many of those really tough discussions and really good input from the public about how what we had been doing as a county and as a city was inadequate. And I am glad that we have moved the needle this far. And I really do also want to thank the New County Executive, Sarah Inmarato, and her Director of Human Services, Erin Dalton, for adding that capacity, nearly 500 actual housing units. And again, where you can lock your own door, where you don't have to leave in the morning, where you know you're going to be safe. It's, we've worked closely with some of the people who are providing the outreach services to the people who are outdoor and to, you know, face the prospect of losing your possessions like your identification, your social security card, your medications, your family photos. Losing your possessions and having to deal with that on a daily basis only adds stress and doesn't help people get their lives back together. And so, we've come a long way in five years. What we have in front of us now is not solving all of the problems, but it does address one narrow portion, I think, that was problematic in our zoning code, which is that in areas where you could have apartments and multifamily and hotels, you know, why not make it easier to also apply to have this kind of supportive services, transitional housing shelters? And that is what we're trying to accomplish here. So, when you look at a map of the city, think about the places where you see large apartment buildings or hotels, they tend to be in our high-density areas, near our river fronts, in our busy business districts. And so, this map reflects that map. And so, we feel like this is a good compromise. And again, it's just kind of removing one of the obstacles that we had in our city code, so that it is clean and there is a clear path on how to apply for permits to do even more of this kind of housing. And we've had, many of us have had this kind of housing effectuated also in the last five years. Councilman Mosley and I share the Board of District 9 and District 7 on Stanton Avenue, where we were very happy through lots of community conversations and community inputs, see a nursing home that had been operating for 80 years converted into transitional housing. So, that we know has been in operation for about a year, maybe a little more, and we know that people have moved out of that into permanent housing and gotten their lives back. So, again, we're very appreciative because we know all, the money for this kind of work is at the county, and it's been a long, long conversation now, again, but it has really moved the needle since we started the conversation. Still a ways to go. There certainly continues to be a problem with people becoming unhoused, being in high eviction rates and those kinds of things that we continue to learn and try to address as we go. So, I think that's all I have. I didn't have a question either, so appreciate it, though.
Thank you very much. Any other member? Councilman Mosley?
I just had a quick question for Mr. Lehman. I want to thank everyone for being here today, just to respond to the comment from one of the public commenters specifically around the RCO issue, if you could speak to that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, I would like to address that, and I can just, generally, if that's okay, I can address some of the, some of the comments from, that we've heard, some of the concerns that we've heard, just make sure that we have clarity on the bill. So, for the residential community organizations, the section that references that in this text says that the applicant shall hold a development activities meeting if the project meets one of the criteria of Section 178E.08, which is the residential, the RCO, residential community organization standard. So, that's the same standard that requires a development activities meeting if there's a apartment building or some other large development that's going on, and only requires the meeting. Make sure that the meeting happens before the project goes to the zoning board, and just, that's just to make sure that there's more community input, but it doesn't limit this bill to areas that have RCOs. This would be anywhere that those zoning districts that are, where this is allowed as a special exception are mapped. And I would also say that because it's a special exception, the process for an interim housing use would be applicant would provide to the city an application. That application would need to be able to meet the standards of the use, which include an operations and management plan that addresses the layout, addresses the type of living arrangements, and if the council is able to make the amendments that Planning Commission conditioned on, which would also include provision of wraparound services, then that plan would be what is discussed and reviewed by the zoning board in a public hearing, would get public input from community members, and the zoning board would be the body to review and decide and to ensure that there is, that there is a plan for services, there is a plan for that particular site, and that there's some accountability for that. And then I believe, I don't want to speak for Blake and what your office is considering, but it sounds like there might be additional sort of belt and suspenders to help protect communities and ensure that these uses are responsibly run throughout their length.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. I just want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Coghill and Councilmember Gross for your leadership on this issue, and I think it just really emphasizes the importance of taking, you know, a really multifaceted approach to addressing, you know, this challenge, unprecedented challenge, you know, unprecedented pandemic that we came out of, and it's not just going to be, you know, flooding the zone with, you know, emergency housing or flooding the zone with just transitional housing, but it's going to be a whole, you know, variety of tools we have to have in our toolbox. And I think that it is very timely to add another tool to our toolbox as we continue to explore ways as a city and a region, you know, to address this crisis that frankly, you know, every major metropolitan area in the country, you know, is dealing with. So, I just wanted, you know, thank you, you know, for your leadership as well as your ingenuity and creativity, you know, as well as hard work and doing the research and identifying some best practices and models that we can take from around the country and implement them here as we try to continue to gather up as many tools as possible. them here, as we try to continue to gather up as many tools as possible to address this crisis. So, thanks so much for everyone being here today.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I just, real briefly, I also want to thank Councilman Coghill and Councilwoman Gross for bringing forward solutions and ideas. I mean, I still want to learn a little bit more about this particular bill, but I am eager for the conversation. But I do appreciate that you thought of solutions, especially not only for the homeless population, which a lot of people talk about, the unhoused population, but for people in general. I actually had a phone call two weeks ago from a woman who worked for the FOP at one point, and was asking if she was eligible to do this in her community, if it's something she could do. So, it's not just people that are unhoused, there's a lot of working people that, and working poor, and people aging in place and wanting to stay in their areas and having the land, but not the ability to put a property up. So, I think it takes care of a lot, a broad range of people, so I want to thank you for that, for that work. And I'm looking forward to the conversation.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I will also thank my colleagues for their long work in bringing this forward, two years in the making, I believe. So, thank you for your work, and I look forward to assisting however I can to get it across the finish line. Councilman Coghill?
Oh, sorry. Now, I just wanted to add, again, this is a milestone for me, I think, I hope it is for Councilwoman Gross, too. We had countless hours, it wasn't all peaches and cream. We butted heads a number of times, I will tell you, in my office, and as we did with Director Lehman, as we did with the administration, as we did with many people. So, to get this over the line is very important to me, and again, we are not intending to use this, we hope never to use this. Two years ago, when we set out, we thought we would have to use it. We've done enough research to know that when you give somebody a lock on their door and a place where they can be, that's the start of getting them back and transitioning them back. Even, even as we did this interim housing, you know, in tiny, tiny managed communities, you know, it really is a bridge, I feel, to affordable housing. It truly is. Not necessarily the contain, not necessarily how they build it, but, but really, it's all really one big ball of wax, which is also, as we know, one of the major problems in most metropolitan areas, as it is in the city of Pittsburgh. So, so I just want to say, I would appreciate council members' support on this next week. I will not be here, but I will call in if I have to. This is very important. We've got so much blood, sweat, and tears in this. You know, to get this across the line, again, it's something we never want to use, but if we have to, the tool is there, and just to be able to fall back on it as an option, as Councilman Mosley said, just another tool in the toolkit. You couldn't be more right. So, that's exactly what this is. It's a tool we don't want to use. I don't think we're going to have to use it, judging by the progress that we've made. So, I just personally want to thank you, Councilwoman Gross, for all the work we put in. It's going to be very satisfying to get this on the books and hopefully never used. So, thanks. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Lehman. I appreciate all the conversations, and your team have been excellent in working with us. And thank you, Blake. You know, you've done a lot of research on this, and some things, some tweaks we have will be coming out, and we'll have those discussions with council as they come out. But with this particular bill, we would very much like to see this passed, and really much appreciate your support. So, thanks.
Thank you. With that, Madam Clerk, if you would put this back on our agenda for tomorrow?
Okay.
With that, having exhausted all our business, we are adjourned.